Also, I just want to make an announcement. We're having some technical issues with the GoGov app. We sent out revised of the budget, revision of the budget. For some reason, even though it's opening on the email from GoGov, the links are not opening on the app. We're trying to find out what's going on there. So in case you had any problem opening that app with these revised GoGov. So let's get started. Item number one, approval of minutes for March 11, 2025. Everybody get a chance review?
Yep.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
Zoom.
All in favor? All right. Item number two, approval of warrant.
I'm moving to approve warrant number 041525. We now have $371,000, $25,000 and $99 cents. All of this, $142,000 was the power requirement, the power payment payment, and then another $15,000, almost $15,000 for all fireworks.
All in favor? All right. Okay, department reports. Chief Hurley, want to start?
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening, chief.
For the month of March, there is a total of 168 summonses issued, 453 interim reports were completed, 97 of them were in grand view, and remaining 356 were here in Piermont. And the only other thing I have, I spoke last meeting, is the increased enforcement over the next few months to serve my residents. This week is the cell phone enforcement. Seat belts will be coming up in the child seats. So just remember to have all your children in their car seat, bobbled up, and as well as yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Tommy?
Good evening.
Good evening. Got a memo today from another village about 9W766768. They do have a silk fence. It's just hard to see the construction fence. The orange construction fence is in front of the silk fence. It's silk fence along all of 9W. And they hay baled the driveway every night with rebar through the hay bar, through the rebar, through the hay bales. And they haven't had any problems up on 9W. As a matter of fact, the people at Custer Street are thanking me and wondering where all the water was from that job site because they contain so much of it now and haven't gone in. They have two catch basins on the property that are operational already, and the overflows go into the storm drain system. They were able to clean out an old storm drain from the property that went directly into the catch basins up there. So the site's been clean and dry. So I think the people were just confused because they saw the orange fence.
Right.
Other than that, everything else is blue.
Okay. Thank you. That's everyone. Let's go on to item number four, old business. Does anybody have anything?
No, no old business.
Anybody? Chief. Yep, meaning. Item five, new business.
I cannot add anything.
No? Okay. Public comment. Chief, you want to grab a seat? Okay. And again, just a reminder, this is for non-attend items. Nina? You want to come up and state your name and address, please?
Nina, go on, chief. Through 300 House Road, Goodwill Mayor and trustees. So I'm here to talk about Corral Park. Endemic dog and dog owner issues started in Farland Park. There are a lot of dogs off leash. The owners of Corral Park did put up two signs. Owners insist on not having them on a leash. The dogs rush people. And it's now starting to go to Corral Park. So now there are dogs off leash in Corral Park. There's a signage current in Corral Park that says no dogs. It also says the fence will be closed at dusk. So perhaps people are bypassing that sign and can a new sign be put up that no dogs are allowed in the park and police enforce this? Next is Riley's parking, the no parking spot. So the Transportation Committee, the police chief, and mayor, and it all went to here. And this parking spot was designated no parking for the safety of the people that live, residents that live in the patch, and the access to Ohio streets. So that continues. So asking for more enforcement for that. It's just almost every day. Community Center. So Community Center is getting a lot of research and funding, but also seeing that the current communication methods in place for residents to have access to information is not being funded. So we also saw that the GoGov app, it's glitchy. The one thing that's not glitchy is the website. And the website can be a community hub for everyone to get their emergency data, any data, papers, paperwork, things that are going on with comp plan. So asking if the website can have some people power put into it for communication, I think. Also asking that these and other important meetings be held not during a holy week, not on tax day, and non-traditional school vacation. It provides a distraction, decreases people from being able to come here, and really just access to the information that happens here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nina, in reference to the Community Center, we're in the process of implementing a new software package. And hopefully, in the next coming months, we'll have automated system to reach out to people. And it'll also be tied into our webpage. Where you'll be able to see schedules and announcements. There's good things to come. And...
Yeah, I understood that one of the meetings where there were $500 allocated for the Community Center, for apps, for people law, and things like that. I'm not really tapped into the Community Center. I don't want to be the only person in the village. But I go to the website because the police kind of live here. Everybody's here. This is my safety place. So just asking that funding and that type of focus just beefed up a little bit more here. We have a really big wilderness website. And if that same attention can be brought to the website.
I agree. It's coming, I promise.
Excellent.
And you'll also see a bigger presence from the village in this coming budget.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say. We actually added money into the budget for social media and help update the website.
Awesome.
I was going to talk about that when I talked about the budget, but...
Yes, same there's a lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, let's start.
Hi, good evening. Back in September, I came to the board regarding the fence at 447, 477, also including a piece of property that's owned by Riley's and also a piece of property owned by Phil Griffin. Pointed out that it was not to code. I applied to go to the ZBA, was not successful. But actually, it's this board that should enforce the code in the Village of Piermont. So I am appealing to you to enforce the code in the Village of Piermont. The fence is illegal. It's not for the zoning code. And I ask that it be taken down. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Gray.
I would draw my request.
Okay, Alexis Stark.
Good evening. Alexis Stark, 850 Piermont Avenue, Piermont, New York. So I would like to talk about the SECPRO process this evening. As far as I can see, the village has not adequately followed the SECPRO, State Environmental Quality Review Act process to identify and study potential environmental impacts that may result from the comprehensive plan, its vision, its goals, and its recommendations. The village has not made any documents pertaining to the SECPRO process available to the public on the website. This is after over a year of the public requesting that the village should be more transparent in its operations. According to SECPRO documents filed from the county, the village did not fill out the long environmental assessment form, parts one through three. And I thought that was a requirement, or at the very least, best practice. And instead submitted a box chart that claims that only three of the approximately 90 suggested goals and recommendations, not to mention other principles and ideas in this comprehensive plan, which is to serve as a roadmap for the village for the next 10 to 100 years, will have any environmental impact. It does not seem possible that this two-volume plan would have basically no impact on anything related to any of the categories meant to be covered by the SECPRO review process. Land, geological features, surface water, groundwater, flooding, air, plants and animals, aesthetic resources, historic and archaeological resources, open space and recreation, critical environmental areas. The whole village is a critical environmental area. Transportation, energy, noise, and odor, and light, human health, community plans, and community character. Clearly, many of the plan's goals and recommendations will impact the village's very delicate environment, both in the ecological and broader sense. Therefore, the village should make a positive declaration under SECPRO and conduct a thorough environmental impact study with full community participation. Since 1979, New York State courts have required that major agencies, the village in this instance, take a hard look at all potential impacts during the review. The village has not done so. A final concern with the SECPRO document filed with the county is that the stated goal to quote, ensure that the zoning in downtown and throughout the village's stable neighborhoods is consistent with its current bill form, which is, of course, the village's justification for the null and void CBM zone. The section makes misleading statements about the current business fee zone and fails to consider, address, or include the myriad concerns from the community. Thank you.
All right. Item number seven. Public hearing to adopt the Village of Piermont Comprehensive Plan. Do you want to speak first before we open up?
Certainly.
This is Matt from Nelson Pope, who helped us adopt, designed the comprehensive plan.
So as you'll recall, to date, the Comprehensive Plan Committee has been working to prepare a draft recommended plan for year review. They had conducted a public hearing, considered those public comments, significantly amended their first draft of the comprehensive plan in response to those comments, and has now passed it to you for consideration. However, under New York State law, it's clear that you have to hold your own public hearing. And the public has both the right and the opportunity to address you directly, any remaining concerns they have on this next draft of the comprehensive plan, which has been available for review on the village website for some time. We did also receive a comment from Rockland County Department of Planning. I believe that trustees may want to go through some of those comments. I don't know if it makes sense for you to go through them before or after the public. It's really up to the board. After the public comment? Okay. So that said, again, you know, I think it's really your opportunity to listen to the input of the public and consider any comments you hear tonight. And if you are satisfied, you could do one of things. You could close the public hearing tonight. You could extend it to a further meeting. I think we had discussed perhaps meeting next Tuesday. Or you could also keep the written comment period open. That's really something for the board to decide.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Someone want to make a motion for the public here?
Zoom.
All in favor? All right. Chief? Okay, we'll start with Peter Vessler. Did you name an address, please?
My name is Peter Vessler, 300 Hudson Terrace. And my comments are somewhat brief. Just that I think it's too soon to make a vote on this comprehensive plan. As the gentleman stated, we have had access to it for, I think, a couple weeks.
No, why?
How many weeks? Maybe five weeks?
Yeah, since the 21st of February.
Yeah. So I just humbly request that you keep this open for more written comment and for more public meetings so that we can actually have a discussion instead of just having a one-way kind of like comment period of time. I would also like to say that we need to address noise issues in the comprehensive plan to a much more detailed degree. I would request that there is a more robust conversation about our zoning and comprehensive plan publicly before this comprehensive plan is voted on. Because I think that is at the key to why there's so much hesitation and non-support to go ahead with the comprehensive plan. Because there's too many questions about what the zoning looks like within it. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Catherine Roder.
Hello, Catherine Roder, 300 Hudson Terrace. Thank you so much for hearing our comments tonight. I am also very concerned about the comprehensive plan getting approved without further input and discussion from the village. I believe there are many facets of that plan that need to be fleshed out and defined more clearly so there's no question going forward and so that we can be in agreement. I think, or I hate to say it, but I assume that most of us are on the same page about protecting the character of our village and the nature that we will enjoy here. And I'm especially concerned about changes that have been happening currently to the flavor of the village. As an example, the new construction that Charlie referenced that has wonderful drains. That's great that it has wonderful drains, but that entire property was clear cut. And all the mature trees are gone. There's not one tree left. And you can't, that's 100 years to get those trees back. And so I am urging the village to think forward and to think about protecting the character and our old growth trees and our building, and thinking environmentally. All of this, it's a very, very complex mix. I will also add that I'm a native Staten Islander. And I witnessed firsthand what happens when zoning is not carefully thought out and people come in and do what they want. Staten Island, when I was younger, was lovely little villages, very bucolic, rolling hills. And it is not like that at all today. So I urge you to please, please be good leaders and open this up so we can really have a strong comprehensive plan to take us into that future. Thank you.
Barbara Shuland?
Barbara Shuland, 229 Hudson Terrace. I think I'm a little confused by the comments that are being made. And I think they're all well-intentioned and all have, and everyone has good ideas. But having served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, my understanding is this is a roadmap. It's not a detail. And I think everybody at their heart that was in the committee really had the village, the environment, our natural resources, all at heart. And the changes to zoning to only be, to reflect the best of the village. So I'm very concerned that people think that there should be details in a plan like this before we actually make a decision to do any of the things that were listed. That's my concern that they misunderstand.
Nina?
So in part building, on what Barbara just spoke about, this is the first comp plan that the village has ever seen. So thank you for what you're doing and also for finding your way in a new place. And hopefully that the communication will stay open with... But I'd also like to, this partially speaks to what Alexis spoke to. And that was that there are, I didn't see any SECPRO reports, no environmental impact statements. And that the zoning is still essentially seeded into the comp plan, which in fact, the zoning has been struck down by the Supreme Court, by Judge Grumal. So I'm really confused by that. Why those letters, CP, are still anywhere in there when it was said that it was a mistake that it was in there? I think, I don't remember who said that in one of the first meetings. And also bringing this to weight, to put weight on it and to see if the board would research this. It's my understanding from a simple internet search that the current village attorney also represents a private landowner who currently owns 75% of the parking in the village in addition to large swaths of very buildable acreage. They have not been recusing themselves. I believe this person is on the comp board or has sat in. So I'm asking that if this is the case, or for clarity on that, for that person, that attorney to not, to refuse themselves if there is a relationship.
Lori Laney? John Torme? No? Paul Kaden?
Hi, Paul Kaden, 329 Hudson Terrace. I also is a member of the comp plan committee. And my comments are as much to the community as they are to the board. There's a lot of energy and discussion about the zoning implications or lack of implications for downtown. And we all can agree or disagree about the need for new zoning. I want to be sure that people are paying attention to all the aspects of the comp plan, which in fact highlight a series of priorities, each of which is going to take a lot of work. And in particular, the existential threats of environment to the community. So this is truly a comprehensive plan. And I hope for as much discussion on these other aspects as there is currently about the zoning aspect downtown. Thank you.
Kate?
Good evening. Kate and Kate, 320 Ash Street. Good evening. I appreciate the efforts of the current and former members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee and working on the comprehensive plan. There are many great goals and intentions laid out in the comp plan. And I look forward to pursuing all those goals for our community in the years and decades to come. I'm going to skip over some things. I emailed Jennifer all my comments, but a couple of them got cut off in time. So I want to say I absolutely agree with the comments that Nina and Alexis made about the SECPRO environmental assessment and impact process. And also just a broader comment about the village's lack of sharing pertinent information with the public regarding village business, including the comprehensive plan. I appreciate that the village has made an increased attempt in the last couple of months to improve communication. But as it relates specifically to tonight's meeting, the village posted a message from the Piermont Village Board on the 21st of March stating, once the consultant drafts the proposed code changes and distributes them to the board, we'll post them for review prior to the public hearing. No such drafts of proposed code changes were ever shared with the public prior to the meeting this evening. Message from the Piermont Village Board, update on the Piermont Comprehensive Plan dated March 14. Shared recommendations of the plan of potential code changes to draft concurrent with the adoption of the comprehensive plan. They have referenced E6 and E7 with the possibility for E11 and F3. It was noted again that drafts of these amendments will be shared with the public. And to date, they have not been shared with the public. The village then posted a matrix entitled, CP Recommendation for Zoning Code Amendments, dated 3/14/25 to the village website, which includes goals and recommendations for implementation timeframe concurrent with adoption for many additional recommendations that were specifically not recommended by the Comprehensive Plan Committee to be passed concurrent with the comp plan, including D2, D3, D6, H5, J3, and K13. The goals and recommendations in D3, D6, H5, and K13 are tenants of the formerly intended and widely rejected CBM zone change, which was declared null and void by a New York State Supreme Court judge and rejected by the public and Rockland County Planning. I recall the planner, or Mr. Kaden, specifically noting at the March meeting that they were specifically intending not recommending the quote, most controversial zone change to be included with the comprehensive plan. So I'm once again unclear as to why the mayor and the board published these goals and recommendations as being intended to pass concurrent with the comp plan. No drafts of these proposed code changes were ever shared with the public as well and should not be under consideration for adoption concurrent with the comp plan. The business fee zone has served the village well for over 50 years. As Rockland County noted, there should be no attempt by the village to usurp the role of the relevant planning and zoning boards and planning processes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Elise?
Christopher Elise, I think he's out of your home place. Thanks to everybody who's done the work on the comprehensive plan. I, this was one of what I was meaning, intending to say, but I had read the entirety of the comprehensive plan, volumes one and two. And I did not walk away from thinking that it included recommendations, specific recommendations on zoning. I hadn't seen the documents related to that. I didn't know they were available. So I agree in principle that if there are specific zoning recommendations, those should be shared with the public and discussed before anything goes forward. Specifically, I just, there were two specific items I wanted to bring up about the plan. Both are, I think, just errors or oversights. But I think it's important enough that I would request that they be corrected. The first was related to two maps that are in the plan. The first one is map F2, which shows the wetlands. It's on page 42. It fails to accurately reflect the wetlands in and around Witten Pond, which is the parcel of land owned by Tapanze School. Actually, it's accurately reflected elsewhere. So figure F1 shows where New York State DDC mapped those wetlands. And they cover, most of that, or a large portion of it, not the majority of that parcel. And so I think that should be reflected on the map of the town that shows the town's wetlands. And similarly, map E1 indicates open spaces and parklands in the town. And similarly, that parcel, which is currently open space, is not reflected accurately. So I'd have to let those errors be corrected simply because I believe those maps will be important as we consider the recommendations around wetlands and how we treat open spaces. And so having those reflected accurately is important for future discussion. The other, which I imagine is mostly just an oversight. I know it's a lot of work. The other, which I imagine is mostly just an oversight, I know it's a lot of work, but it's kind of documented together, but it, and I know this is just, you know, we're compiling a lot of information to get it right. But in the Volume 1, it says, "Volume 1 is the recommendations, Volume 2 is just, no recommendations, just dig up." Like that's the support for why we're recommending these things. But I nonetheless noticed a lot of recommendations in Volume 2. They might have just been things that didn't get edited out, and many of them are quite specific, more specific even than the ones in Volume 1, like for instance, a specific recommendation to relocate the Department of Public Works, a recommendation for specific parcel of land and how it should be considered or treated. I would request that any recommendations that are in Volume 2 be removed. I think that for the villagers and people who are considering the recommendations, they're expecting to see those in Volume 1, and Volume 2 is quite dense and not many people are going to want to be invested. I wouldn't want those recommendations to go forward without people having them where... Thank you.
Could you repeat that correction you were talking about, the map E1?
So map, so map F2 is the one that shows the wetlands.
Yeah.
And then map E1, and it might be about the definition of parkland and open space, but there's, the key says that green shows parkland and open space, and it doesn't show that parcel of land is green even though it's currently...
Which...
It's the same parcel. It's the one owned by the Tapansy School. It's around here.
Okay, the Cowboy Fields.
Yeah, Cowboy Field, exactly. Thank you.
Alexis Starr?
Alexis Starr, 850 Piermont Avenue of Piermont, New York. So yeah, so I would also like to ask that you do not vote on the plan this evening. I think it's always best practice to keep written comments open after a public hearing, other people's comments, you know, stir ideas in everyone who's here. So please do keep that open for a while so that people can continue to participate. The plan suggests that the 9W corridor is suitable for a floating planned use-mix development zone, PUD, while incorrectly stating that the transportation access is excellent on 9W. There is no public transportation access on Route 9W, and it's a very dangerous route. And without clearly articulating where on 9W the PUD would be planted, or what environmental impacts would ensue. Please do not make any recommendations for PUD zones on 9W without thorough environmental impact study. Please delete the recommendation to land a PUD zone on school district property from Volume 2, page 37. This land should be preserved for the educational needs of our children and as environmentally significant open space. Additionally, the 9W corridor is sloped and wooded. The plan itself calls for preservation at our wooded slopes in the vision statement. And again, as other people have pointed out this evening, we have yet another very large site that has been clear-cut of every trait on 9W, and I don't know if anything is being done about that. As other people have said, recommendation D6 should be removed from the plan. It again has the exact language that was used to justify the non-voy CBM zone, which was along with 447 Kermit Avenue apartment complex, loudly rejected by the community. The community suggested that at a later date, the zoning for downtown could be analyzed with the goal of better protecting its historic and aesthetic resources and character through researching zoning codes and guidelines from similar historic towns and villages in the Hudson Valley. Sections E1, future shoreline overlay district, E6, require structures and special flood hazard zones so that Hudson River to be elevated. E7, allow flexibility for how height is measured by the village's zoning law, etc., are unclear. The Comprehensive Plan is supposed to be written in plain English. The potential heights of the stilts and potential total heights of the building are unclear. It is unclear how these recommendations will impact the use, light, and airflow of our neighboring properties and the recreating public. Residents express many concerns with the silt houses by the post office at Paradise Avenue. Further environmentally needed, it is important to look at neighborhoods holistically and from an aesthetic and quality of life perspective. These own amendments appear to be based only on FEMA data where one, the house is in floodplain and a house next door. I emailed you all my comments as well.
Jeff Gordon, 521 Gare Street. Thank you to the board for taking our comments tonight. And I see some of the members of the CPC are in the audience, and I want to thank them for their two-year or more percolating effort in preparing the CPC. There is a lot of good in the CPC, but there's some questions that are raised. And while I take this board at its word, that it has no intentions of passing any implementation legislation, but for, I believe it was the two provisions that were recommended by trustee Mitchell, happened to do with raising elevation of structures in certain medial flood zones. The actions of the board apparently recently, together with what I find in the full assessment attached to the Comprehensive Plan, seem to indicate a different sentiment and intent with regard to future passage of the CBM. And I speak specifically to D6, it's referred to in the full environmental assessment attachment, which reads, "Over the course of plan preparation, it became apparent that the Business B zoning district has no density cap and allows as many apartment units as may fit within a structure. Additionally, bulk requirements do not relate at all to the existing development pattern requiring larger lots, greater setbacks in yards, and shorter buildings than existed in downtown. This leads to a regulatory environment where the zoning board becomes a de facto agency determining bulk requirements and residential density on a case-by-case basis as appeals are made, instead of the Board of Trustees making these determinations in advance based on a well-considered plan. This recommendation therefore recommends that the Business B zoning district or downtown be reconsidered and rewritten to match the bulk densities within the existing downtown." Now, if the board has no intention of going back to the CBM, what I find particularly troubling is a letter that was sent to the appellate division by Zarin and Steinmetz, developer's attorney, dated April 8th, that starts out by saying, "On behalf of all appellate..." Well, the board in the village, by virtue of his filing a notice of claim, a notice of appeal rather, is an appellate. So I want to know if Zarin and Steinmetz, rather than McGovern and Lyons, your attorneys in the litigation, are asking for an extension of time for the village to appeal the decision of Judge Greenwald throwing out the CBM with the intent of possibly bringing it to life later on? I'm particularly troubled by the village's ongoing push to advance the Comprehensive Plan and accompanying zoning changes, particularly as these recent efforts have not been openly shared with residents. Most notably, the environmental assessment form submitted in connection with the plan...
Just one quick note.
Yes, sir.
On the property on 9W, a lot less than 50% is cleared. There was already bribery up there that was always been there. The upper B lots were always cleared up there since I've been the building inspector. You just noticed that because that lot of roads was cleared. That was cleared because that's where the county disturbance, the septic system had to go. And just for breakfast for people, the owner acknowledges that the village is a bit of a wiring. He has 120 trees coming before he even starts construction and is going to plant them the next couple of days, because he has to come in on a truck. So 120 trees are going to be announced to shield the property from the roadway again and give it some privacy. That's where the septic system had to go in, according to the county. So he's already, he already has the trees in route to start replanting the property. But I just wanted to clarify that for people, that it was completely clear about him. It was not completely clear about him. You should come to the building department and look at the plans before you recuse up on that. Thank you.
Thank you for the other information.
Thank you.
Do you want to comment on any of the comments?
Yeah, sure.
So I think that you've obviously heard a lot of comments here, and I think there's a lot for you to consider. I did want to touch upon one thing, I believe, and Jennifer can verify, I think we posted on the 20th or the 21st of February.
Yeah.
Okay. I think there was a question about code changes. There are no code changes under consideration tonight. The commenter was correct. We originally had thought we would be able to get you well in advance of this meeting code changes, that we could consider both the board and the public tonight. That didn't happen. For reasons of sort of my bandwidth, for one. Sylvia Welsh, who is sort of ushering the grant requirements for this, has said that the priority is to get the comp plan adopted, and if the zoning takes some more time, it takes some more time. So I think that what may have not been clear is that that zoning, including those first two or three zoning that we had discussed last month, will be taking longer. This is not something that's going to be done quickly. It's going to be done over the next month or two for those first two. And as far as the recommendation regarding the downtown, at the last meeting, we did discuss that that would be taken up again in the future, and it would be taken up in a public process, and it will have its own seeker, and it will have its own public hearings and involvement by the public. With regard to the oversights, I will look at map F2, but the reason why that information was only included on the one map is because those are really advisory wetlands that were issued on January 1st of this year by New York State, and the process sort of understands that they don't know the correct locations. And I think that in reviewing it with some of the CPC members who know that property, even on that map, it seems like those wetlands are not correctly noted. That's what DEC has put down based on their AI-driven mapping. But we know that it requires a field visit, what's known as a property JE, for verification. So we put it in to reflect the January 1st changes. We sort of know that they're not accurate enough to update the NWI mapping and other DEC mapping that was located in the plan. With regards to the open space in the Cowboy Fields, we did go over at length with the CPC, the open space parcels. There is some both legal and technical considerations with regard to what is open space, and the CPC spent a lot of time making sure that parkland, publicly-owned land, open space, those terms are used correctly throughout the plan. And that was the result of those maps. With regard to Route 9W, there is a statement, as reflected by the speaker, that 9W is an appropriate place for planned mixed-use development. That statement was originally much more robust. It talked about specifics of the school site. That was removed from the plan. The school site is no longer identified particularly. The idea by the CPC was that there should be some place in the village that is a receiving area for land uses lost over the course of time to sea level rise, but that is a future determination. That is not something that the plan is speaking to right now. It's understood that it's going to take years for this to actually come to pass. So I think those were most of the ones I wanted to discuss. Oh, maybe again, touching on recommendation D6 and the EAF's treatment of it. It was understood, and it is a recommendation of the comp plan, that this, the downtown zoning, the business be updated. It's not a popular recommendation of the plan. It's a recommendation that the CPC looked over in depth, and that they are recommending, that I also am recommending. I have said numerous times in this room that I think it's a bad idea to require, for example, 30-foot front yards in the downtown where most of the buildings are built on the front fault line. I don't think it's the right approach to zoning. That said, the CPC was also very clear that whatever process, it wouldn't be specific, and it would involve future work by this board and the public. So with regard to zoning and seeker in general, comp plan is a general guide. It's not specific. It has recommendations. The vast majority of recommendations in the plan are for the benefit of the environment. The CPC prepared a sustainable Comprehensive Plan, and that was its charge. It looked to improve environmental and quality of life conditions in this village. Yes, there is, D6 is certainly a controversial issue. There are pretty much every other recommendation in there is intended to improve quality of life, make the village more resilient to sea level rise. And the reality is that when you go through the seeker process, you have to identify a significant adverse impact with a high degree of certainty that it's going to happen. In the future, when we work on the zoning and we get into specifics, we have to do seeker again. So when we come out with all of our zoning recommendations, there's going to be an additional EAF, an additional consideration about whether any environmental impacts will occur. Even after the zoning is adopted, any project that comes in for development under that zoning will also have to go through seeker analysis. So when we look at impacts, we look at a baseline of what does the law of the village allow today, and what will allow if we follow these policies. In the future, when we get more specific, we'll look at what would an amended law allow, and then down the road, what would a project allow. So it sort of gets more in-depth. I think I also want to go over the comments that we received from Rockland County Planning. I'll try and touch upon each one in a brief way. The first one is, "Any local law or zoning amendment proposed for concurrent adoption with the plan must be referred to the department." As of now, there's going to be no zoning adopted concurrent with the plan, but every zoning that is considered for adoption will be sent to them for comment. So that is not something that you have to override. Just as a background, when you get a GML review from Rockland County Planning, they have recommendations. If you follow those recommendations, you only require a four-person vote to override and adopt the comp plan. If you want to act contrary to their recommendations, you must vote with majority plus one. So four people must vote affirmatively on the comp plan to override Rockland County Planning. The second comment has to do with, there is a statement in the Comprehensive Plan that it is a living document, and that they basically are recommending that you expand upon and formalize an annual review process to your plan. It's not one of the initial zoning amendments that you had identified previously, which was related to the sea level rise, building heights, et cetera. But it's not a bad idea. It sort of allows you to continue this process on a regular basis in view of the public when you're considering your budgets. So it's sort of a natural opportunity for you to, and the way we usually structure these laws, is for you to empanel a commission of three to five people to go and look at the comp plan, look at what's been implemented, look at what's outstanding, and come back to the board and recommend some additional implementation for the next fiscal year, which usually requires some sort of appropriation. So it's appropriate time, you know, it's usually something that the public's already interested in, and we can put that together if the board thinks this is a good idea and would like to... And we can put that together if the board thinks this is a good idea and would like to do that. The third recommendation, and there's several in here that talk about, again, updating volume two. And volume two of the plan in, I'm sorry, in the third one really talks about amending volume one to reflect the Spark Hill Creek watershed characterization report and to, to identify it as a plan that was reviewed and then to include it in the volume two inventory analysis. Well, the volume two inventory and analysis is the, is the studies, the background that this CPC reviewed in order to prepare this plan. So it's kind of senseless at the end of this to stick something in there that the CPC really didn't consider. So we're recommending that one be overwritten. Orange Town Comprehensive Plan, they noticed that since it was adopted, it's much different than its draft report that was reviewed by the CPC. Again, I think this is sort of an after-the-fact item. The CPC did not review that file report. It reviewed the draft report. And I'm not sure that it makes sense to stick that in volume two and update the plan in response. Recommendation five is really to expand on the idea of expanding housing opportunities in the village. So Rockland County Planning would like you to identify specific areas for which it would appropriate and allow increased residential density and describe additional methods of providing much-needed housing, such as accessory dwelling units. It then identifies that you have several recommendations in your plan that are going to lower housing density, such as the idea that you have to retreat from sea level rise. It doesn't seem timely at this point to dive deep in this. This is something that's going to push this plan back six years, if we want to be honest, talking about multifamily housing. I think you have the groundwork in the plan that if you want to take it up, you can do that in a new process where you consider an appropriate area to increase housing availability. The sixth one talks about how many fire department staff members cannot afford to live within Pirma. And then it just points itself back to the previous recommendation for you to address the housing issue. I don't think you have to override that because you're not really recommending anything, any changes. Number seven, again, Rockland County Housing Needs Analysis. They want you to incorporate it into the review of existing plans, again, in volume two. It's not something that the CPC looked at. I don't recommend doing that. I recommend you override it. Volume two notes that the village does not appear to have a climate smart communities coordinator, which could put the village in jeopardy of losing their bronze certification. It then recommends that you fill the position. You don't have to override that. It's a good recommendation, though. But it's not something with regard to the comp plan. Number nine, they say that they don't disagree with the conclusion regarding the viability of non-tourism businesses in the village. The comp plan says that it's extremely tough for non-tourism-related businesses to thrive in the village. They're suggesting that providing establishments that serve the needs of residents in the village downtown would be an effective method of encouraging pedestrian activities and reducing reliance on personal vehicles and should be explored further. To the extent that they're suggesting it be explored further in the comp plan, we are recommending you override it. It is something that you can do, even though the recommendation does suggest non-tourism is not as viable as tourism-related business. But I don't think it requires comprehensive plan changes. Recommendation H5 talks about a recommendation that allows for a new special permit for non-residential uses that are similar to other uses already allowed in the village to be a special permit use of the planning board. They suggest that there's already an established mechanism to allow specific use in a specific location, the use variance. I think I'm going to have to talk to them. And, and you know, when I did my Rockland County Planning Federation educational session this year, I'll let them know that that is not a viable manner for allowing uses that are not allowed under code because it's, it should be nearly impossible to get a use variance in New York State. If the village wishes to allow greater flexibility in their allowed uses, we recommend the village amend their zoning code to allow more generalized categories of allowed uses that could be applied to a range of similar activities. An alternative approach would be to consider institute a form-based zoning code, which prioritizes physical form over the separation of uses. Form-based code for this village would probably run around $250,000. Probably not something you need. And I think that the CPC really did review this issue. And I think they really preferred the language that ended up in the plan with regard to how you're going to approach these issues. But we don't think that that language needs to be overridden. With regard to 11, the plan should address other services that are commonly used by Pirma residents, but may not be within the borders of the village. Again, that's not something the CPC considered. We didn't look at services that aren't within the border. We request the regular uploading of planning board and zoning board of appeal documents as part of efforts for improved and efficient communication. I think that's what the comp plan needs. They want that. And it sounds like you're already working on the ability of the website to host those documents and provide greater transparency. There is no recommendation for amendment to the plan, so I don't think there's an override required. Numbers 13 and 14 both are suggesting that additional information be included in volume two. I don't need to repeat why. I think that's a bad idea. And lastly, item 15 talks about typos. Of course, we can fix typos before we get to the final plan. We will do that. I will also look at the public, the maps that were brought forth. And if there are any other corrections that are brought forth by the public in their written comments, we'll certainly include all of those. So those are my recommendations. I do think that you will want to override Rockland County Planning. And therefore, you will need, if you decide to adopt the comp plan, it will need to be by four of us. Okay. Now, in terms of next steps, you know, it's, it's my intention to get you the balance of the seeker, the state environmental quality review documents you need to make a decision. I am going to rely, I do think that the part one that was circulated does lay the groundwork to arrive at a determination that this comp plan won't have a significant adverse impact on the environment. An EIS process would add six to eight months to the, to the planning process. And I don't think that there are significant impacts. I would suggest that if the public feels differently, it'd certainly be specific about what those significant adverse environmental impacts may be. And it would be appropriate as lead agency for you to consider those and determine whether you think they are significant. And that's.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to try to get as much out tonight as possible. Any questions or comments on any of the items that we discussed?
I have a quick one.
Yes.
On the goals and recommendation sheet that we talked about on the last visit?
Yes.
Am I correct that we're planning on taking on just two of them and possibly a third in the coming year?
So yeah, so I believe that we talked about having originally the height.
E6.
E6, yes. E1. And I think we said we were going to try to do the stormwater one, which is frankly, we just don't have the capabilities. We'd have to bring in an engineer to work on that. We did inquire on our WBE subconsultant who does have budget left to see if they were comfortable doing that, and then they were not. So it's going to be my suggestion that we work on E1, E6, and E7. And possibly, if you would like to add, this one that was introduced by Rockland County Planning, which talks about a process for reviewing the comp plan each year to make any necessary amendments and to, you know, fund additional implementations.
Max, with the remaining items, how do we take them on? What's, what's the methodology?
Yeah, so the timeframe's in there. And the timeframe in the comp plan, each section has a timeframe listed. And the idea is that anything that is listed as concurrent with adoption of the comp plan is something that is in a state where you can take it on now. Things that are short-term are things that we think you need to do a little bit of additional work on. You might need to find some funding for. You might need to make appropriations for that. They're a little more significant. Things that are moderate are really require a significant degree more of work. Those are things that you might need to establish a commission to do. You might need to assemble a working group. You might need to do additional consultant procurement. Long-term, again, are these even more intensive processes where it's going to take a multi-year process to get to them? And then the last category is ongoing. And by the nature of those, they're just things that you should be doing as you're making decisions going along. So it's like considering or improving your communications to the public and considering sea level rise in your decision-making processes. Those type of things are things that should be on an ongoing basis.
So this is a long project.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, in New York State, you know, on average, it's, it's something that you want to take a hard look at every six to 10 years is a comp plan. Communities don't do that. I'd say that the actual term for communities tends to go to 15- to 20-year timeframe. It's not in the forefront. But it is something you should be doing every six to 10 years. And frankly, it's something you should always be looking at annually. Because this document, it's a lot of work. It's intended to be used. It's not intended to sit on the shelf. And you really do want to, each year, set forth an agenda of implementations that you want to undertake each year.
It's a roadmap.
Exactly, it's a roadmap. And if you're not following the roadmap, you're going to get lost. You are.
Yes. You have a question for Max?
Yes.
Sure, sure.
So they come up or kind of agree from here? So I'm just curious, in terms of the plan being a roadmap, in your experience, once a community has like passed through the board or the village government, the roadmap, how much is that used in the future legally to justify or support decisions made by the village government? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, so I do understand the question. Once this board adopts the comp plan, it is held to make decisions consistent with the comp plan. It can, and that's one of the reasons why, and I know there's a lot of people who want a lot of specificity in the comp plan when we talk about increasing building heights and things like that. But you want to give the board the flexibility to react to the, whatever, when they, when they undertake these processes and they start doing more analysis and they start listening to the public on the specifics. If it says 10 feet in the, in the comp plan and they determine it's got to be 12 or it's got to be eight, right? It has to be consistent with the comp plan. So now you put yourself in a position where you have to amend the comp plan in order to adopt it. So yes, this board has to act and zoning must be consistent with the adopted comp plan. But it is not a law. So if you had an applicant that wanted to do something, or developer that wanted to do something, and they, they came in and they said, what I want to do is consistent with the comp plan, that doesn't give a cart launch. The legislature, your, your village board is allowed to, to consider the comp plan and to consider other factors in determining whether that, that project is right for the village. Doesn't sort of have that, that status of law. It doesn't bind this board to do anything.
Can I make a follow-up question, please? So is the, I think that at one point, there was a recommendation for the Board of Trustees to take on some special appeals for zoning.
Perhaps special use permits?
Yeah. And is that still in the comprehensive plan?
I hear a yes. I don't recall it being in the, in the comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
But we, I could look into that and give you an answer tonight if you like.
That would be great.
Okay.
And, and so, because if we get that specific about giving any board, not just this board, but any future board, the, the legitimacy or the roadmap kind of like vision to say, in this case, where there's a special application for a permit, and the zoning board of appeals or the planning board can be kind of like superseded by this board, that just kind of gives me a little bit of like caution.
It's, it's an interesting point. I don't want to, I know you have other items that you might want to be getting to tonight. But I don't want to get into a long, you know, civics debate. But the reality is, this is the only board that has to come to you every four years to get re-elected. So.
Every year.
Every two years, okay. So to some extent, putting the decision in their hands makes the zoning process more subject to public input, which is why most communities in New York State have planning boards, which are not elected because the idea of zoning is that you set the rules in advance for everyone and you follow them. And you don't deviate for this guy or make it harder for that guy. You just accept the rules and hopefully you did a good job and then you play by them. So there are certain special uses. A special use is a use that you would not normally allow, but for the fact that you're going to consider certain factors, certain rules, special rules, according to those uses. So a lot of times, those get tested with the village board because the village board has the ability to, or has wider discretion to impose additional requirements. Planning board either has to be delegated that authority or those requirements have to be identified and passed. So I can look, I'll look and see if there is anything that talks about that.
Yeah, so are you going to recommend that public comment be kept open? And then could you explain to us the process of that? Would you get together with the board and discuss all the written comments that come in? And will the plan be amended again? Because I know there are a lot of things I didn't get to read into the record this evening. I'm sure other people have more concerns as well. So keep it up on that.
So, so I think, you know, again, the idea is to try and get this plan adopted in a manner that would satisfy our grant requirements because our funding is at risk at this point. We have set a meeting for next Tuesday. I think it's really up to the village board to see if they're prepared. You know, they have to feel like they understand the issues that were raised. I will be reviewing all the comments that come in, written. I've heard, I've taken notes on what was spoken. I certainly will be prepared to talk to them and provide information on all those comments on Tuesday. I'm sure a lot of you will be here on Tuesday. And I think it's really up to the, to the board. But we're running out of time. So if it doesn't happen Tuesday, I mean, I think it's, are we talking about another Tuesday? I don't think we want to go into May because in May, our funding is starting to get in danger. Frankly, I think it is in danger if we go in May. So that's what Sylvia last advised us. Again, for the comp plan, not for the zoning. The zoning is going to be a longer process. You're not going to be rid of me in next month. I'm going to be here talking to you about zoning. And honestly, I'll, I'll probably be here in the fall if we're going to take up the downtown zone. So it's going to take a while to come.
So I, I guess my, my concern about the comp plan, and I just want us to be, you know, wise in terms of pound, you know, pound wise, not penny foolish, but saying. Because I also heard you talk about housing density. Because I also heard you talk about housing density and I understand the issue we need housing for our fire department and a range of housing. We also have that unique situation of having a river and having a mountain and only so much built-in space in between there, most of which, if it's not wetlands, is mostly used.
Yes.
And the concern is, is that there are things in this comprehensive plan that I've just heard you say will dictate laws or guidance for laws that have to be made that then developers will come in and say, "Well, it's in the comprehensive plan. You guys need to make a law." So it's in the comprehensive plan, the law then has to comply to the comprehensive plan, which in fact then does allow things to be done that maybe are not the best for this village.
Yeah, I would say that the CPC in preparing this comp plan has been very careful to not tie the hands of the government for making appropriate decisions. I don't think there's anything in that comp plan that requires this board to adopt a law, for example, if they don't think it's right for the village. I do think that there are things in the plan that limit, if they want to adopt the law, how they adopt the law, if you follow me. Because you're not allowed to act contrary to the zoning, but nothing says you have to act. All right, so that's my read of it. If, you know, if you have any more detailed questions, I certainly could speak to you. And if you have any written comments, I could certainly review those as well.
So I don't have any now, and I would very much appreciate an extended period for that to be developed and submitted. Thank you.
That's up to the village board.
Max, what is the positive designation? That the comprehensive plan would have a significant impact on the environment, trade and sequestration due to our timeline in getting the grant money?
If you paused deck this, you would have to give back your grant money.
So you're saying that in your estimation, that you don't see that this comprehensive plan would have a significant impact environmentally or any other way on the village?
So I will say that as we were getting down to the wire, we took a lot of things out of the comp plan that would have kept me from making that determination. So we have taken a lot of previous recommendations out. For example, somebody mentioned the specific recommendation to consider the school site for a PUD mixed-use multifamily. I think our earliest draft even had a particular density stated. I don't remember what it was, it might have been 12 units per acre, it might have been more. But we took it out because, number one, I think we realized it was sort of maybe jumping the gun on sea level rise. The idea is, again, as we lose housing, as we lose the downtown, there should be a place where Piermont gets to continue to exist as a whole community instead of just becoming a bedroom community. That was the idea behind that recommendation. But I think that the CPC heard the input. And frankly, if we wanted it in there, we would have had to do a lot of secret work to figure out how that wouldn't result in impact. So at this point, I'm comfortable, and that's that matrix in the part one, that we, for every recommendation, we go through the EAF part three and say, "Is this going to result in an impact?" And remember, our baseline is not that nothing will get built, because that's not what's current. We have a regulatory environment that allows you to build all throughout this village. And the questions are, are the policies of this village going to allow that future development in a way that will be more impactful than what could occur today under law? And I think that, again, I'm comfortable recommending a neg deck to this board.
That's, I mean, I don't have to convince you, given the proximity to the river, a mountain on one side, most of our waterfront?
Somebody mentioned you're a critical environmental area.
That's a tough stretch.
But most of the recommendations in that plan are to improve and protect the environment. So.
Max, one more.
Yep.
Max, would you be able to maybe fill out the actual EAF form that notes the matrix and publish it on the website so that we can look through, you know, every consideration?
That matrix, that matrix is essentially the part two for every recommendation, so if you look at...
Right, but you check off yes in certain areas, and if you check off yes, you're supposed to check off the specifics.
Right.
I think it would just be helpful, we can't even read that, it wasn't on the website at all. It was, you know, someone had employed it from the county. So if you could just fill out the actual EAF form and if you want to do the matrix as well, that's fine. But I think people need to see that actual form and everything that you said no to.
So you're saying for, so the form is for the overall plan. That's why I do the matrix, right? Because that way you can see as I went through which particular recommendations caused me to trigger a yes. The idea is that the part three would address any of those impacts that's not already addressed in the part one. And that's paperwork that is going to come to the village before Tuesday.
Just talking about, since I said we go about the recommendation about school, it is still a requirement. But that's one of the things.
Yeah, I told, I thought you had to do that.
We, yeah, again, this was, again, because this is, these, what's in volume two were reports that were delivered to the CPC and made available to the public during the last two and a half years that we've been preparing this plan. And there's this critical question of, do we change what was considered? That's like a record, a history of what CPC had, what they thought of. I could do that, and I can do that before next Tuesday. I already went through and took out every reference to CDM, except for one or two that talk about why we're taking that reference about. I did put in very specific language in volume one and in volume two that anything in volume two is not a recommendation. It's explicit in volume one. Yeah, and that is also something, if it's not in volume two, like it had in volume two. Because that's the intent, frankly. The other thing we can do, frankly, is this board can, when they adopt the resolution, only adopt volume one. Right, so that's just how we write the resolution. All the policies and recommendations are intended to be in volume one, there's no reason you have to adopt volume two. And frankly, you know, my originally proposal to the CPC is that we don't even call it volume two, we call it databook. Because to me, databook is sort of, it's not a comp plan, it's a databook, right? But I think that a lot of the CPC members felt there was very important information in there regarding the analyses that were conducted, that they really didn't want that to be a part of the comp plan.
So you can just adopt volume one and that's it?
You could, yeah. Anybody else?
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
So I think with, I think it is to close the public comment portion, but to keep the, any written comments available through next week?
Could we make it Saturday?
Through Saturday.
Just so I can look at them on Monday?
Is ready, any additional written comments through this Saturday, submit to the court?
So I'll check my email on Saturday?
I just need it Monday morning.
Okay.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
You would, I think it's a legal question, but usually it's close the public hearing, leaving written comment open through.
Is that, yeah.
Can you set a time on Saturday? Like, what time on Saturday, or is it by Sunday midnight? I'm sorry, just...
It's Easter on Sunday, so I'm definitely not going to be working on Sunday.
I don't mind if it's Sunday at midnight. I'm going to be looking at them Monday morning. I'm also not going to be looking at them on Easter.